Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the rule.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. All right, well, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're gonna abstain on the agenda? I'll bet you're gonna abstain on the minutes. It's good to be right on top of it. All right, we don't have any proclamations or presentations, so we're looking at approving the minutes from the previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I move approval of the minutes from the meeting, May 21st, 2024.
Second.
A motion by Rayrower and a second by Grischoviac. Has any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. Councilmember Armstrong? All right, we have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to, it's an informational item. There's been a corporate officer change for Outback Steakhouse. William Michael Healy is replacing Christopher Meyer as the chief financial officer and executive vice president, Outback Steakhouse of Florida, LLC. That's just informational only. Item, the next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 24-65, accepting the Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $12,250. Community Strength Foundation has generously donated $12,250 to offset costs for the 2024 Summer Concert Series. Council is asked to adopt a resolution formally accepting this donation, which is required per state statute. The city is grateful to the Community Strength Foundation for their generosity, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-65, accepting the donation of $12,250 from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2024 Summer Concert Series. And the next item and the final item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 24-67, appointing Kathleen Strike to the Historical Commission. And that was interesting in the remarks, it starts out with "longtime community member," and I thought, well, let's, we don't usually say "longtime community," and then I went "Historical Commission." Now I got that, significance of that. Longtime community member Kathleen Strike has expressed interest in the history of Coon Rapids and in serving on the Historical Commission. Ms. Strike attended the Historical Commission's May meeting, and the Historical Commission recommends approval of the appointment, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-67, appointing Kathleen Strike to the Historical Commission. And that is our complete consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, I'm gonna go with Novak here.
Oh, I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Motion by Novak and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or questions from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I just want to thank Ms. Strike, who has a long history with Coon Rapids, to the Historical Commission, and thank you for coming to serve with the city. We appreciate all of our commission members. They do a lot of work for, you know, for the city, and there's always other openings, too.
Very good. Anything else? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. And we are up to old business. Number five is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2306, an ordinance amending Chapter 12-415, Sub-14, Fire Prevention Open Burning Administrative Fee. This was introduced at the previous council meeting, and all this is doing is removing the dollar amount from the code so that it can be amended as necessary from year to year. Correct, Ms. Lenz, Mayor?
That is correct.
I was waiting for a nod.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2306 and ordinance amending Chapter 12-415, Sub-14, Fire Prevention Open Burning Administrative Fee.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to item six. Consider planning case 24-8, consider a site plan and dimensional and design flexibility for a building addition at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard, brick wall services. Mr. Patner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So I do have presentations for my two items tonight. So the first one is a request for a site plan and approval of dimensional and design flexibilities for an addition to IDC Automatic 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard. So it's a building addition to their existing building. And so this is located just south of 610 on Coon Rapids Boulevard, adjacent to the industrial area there. IDC Automatic occupy one of these two lots, adjacent to In-Town Suites and the Holly Street industrial area, kind of to the southwest. Right now IDC Automatic uses the building that's circled in red there, and they also lease the building to the southwest that accesses onto Holly Street. What they're looking to do is move their operations from that leased building to the southwest to a new addition that they're planning to build on the north side of the, their main building, the one circled there, on a lot that they currently own, adjacent to In-Town Suites. So they're working with the county to combine their lot and then the two lots adjacent to them. Just really quickly to show you what those lots are, I have parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three labeled here. Those are the three lots that they're looking to combine. Going back real quick. So the addition that they're looking to build, I apologize for going through this like this, the addition that they're looking to build would be just to the north of their existing building, and then a little bit to the southwest. What they're proposing to do is remove the access to the southwest onto the Holly Street building and build a new access onto the In-Town Suites property to the northwest, which they would use as a second access onto Coon Rapids Boulevard. So they're not proposing any new access onto Coon Rapids Boulevard, just accessing an existing one, and they continue to use their existing access on Coon Rapids Boulevard. What they're proposing is basically to double the building size. So their existing building is 21,740 square feet, their proposal 25,570 square feet, and the proposed addition would also be, it's a single-story building, but it would have two-story expression. It would be the height of a two-story building, essentially. So they'd have about a 47,000 square foot building on the site. The proposed use for the building is generally as warehouse, generally for warehouse purposes. I think some manufacturing might be proposed to move into that new addition, but I believe their, their general use is warehouse. The existing building is generally a sales floor showroom. They have some warehouse use there as well as some manufacturing. And essentially, what they're proposing would look like this. This is kind of a basic rendering of it. So the proposed addition is on the right there, the existing building is on the left. The existing building mostly has a facade of brick, natural stone, as well as some garage doors that are for show that are on the outside of the building. The proposed building would have exterior materials, mostly raked precast concrete panel with articulated color, so changing color across the building face. And this is kind of showing the two-story expression. It's just a tall, one-story warehouse floor building. So because this is in the Port District, it does require city council approval of any site plan, so that's why I'm bringing it for you today. And the Planning Commission did have a public hearing at the May 16th Planning Commission meeting, where there were no comments heard at the public hearing itself. And the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed site plan, as well as the flexibility requests. And I just want to go over the flexibility requests really quickly. So they're requesting two dimensional flexibilities, one for floor area ratio. It's required in the Port District that they have .6 floor area ratio, meaning that the total floor area, including multiple stories of the building, is at least 60% of the area of the total site. This is very difficult to do with an industrial building, especially a single-story industrial building. They managed to get to .32 floor area ratio, and they're requesting flexibility to make up the difference between that and the .6 required. There's also a flexibility for the requirement in the River Rapids Overlay District that a building be no larger than 20,000 square feet. What they're proposing is more than twice that size. Meeting either the floor area ratio or that 20,000 square foot maximum would be very difficult on a site of this size, especially with an industrial building. They're proposing to split the difference, essentially, and that leads to them meeting neither of those requirements. And they're also requesting design flexibility for the requirement that 30% of the building be brick or natural stone. Most of the existing building is brick or natural stone, and the proposed building is raked precast concrete, which is approved material in the Port District. So they, they're reaching about 20% of the building face facing Coon Rapids Boulevard would be brick or natural stone, and they're requesting design flexibility to make up the difference. Staff feel that the proposed precast concrete would fit in with the other industrial uses in the area and generally support the flexibility request. So with that, staff are making a recommendation to approve the proposed site plan, as well as the flexibility requests. And that's all I have for you in terms of a presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Patner, do you have a picture, you had kind of a sketch of the warehouse?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have what it would look like? I can remember being surprised by a warehouse before, where it was like, oh, well, that looks good. And then when we saw what it was actually gonna look like, it was really plain. And this is right on Coon Rapids Boulevard. I guess I just would like to see a architect's rendering, or whatever that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The best I have is the rendering that I have here on the slideshow, so I don't actually have anything showing any more detail than this. So raked precast concrete, I could probably pull up another building that looks similar. It's, it's something that you do see occasionally in industrial areas. But really, you do have kind of the either dark blue or gray and white kind of alternating concrete panels. And then, I, you know, with doing a little bit of digging, I could probably find another building that looks like it. But in terms of what this building's gonna look like, this is probably all I have for you right now.
So is this, is this gonna end up looking, do you think, more like, like the federal warehouse or the one down on East River Road that, next to John Roberts? I don't remember what that was called, something with an S. You thinking, maybe, I don't know. It's right on Coon Rapids Boulevard. Okay, it just seems like you don't want to just drop a warehouse there right on the Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the question. I just don't have the, the memory of what either of those buildings looked like that I could pull up in my head to say which one it would look more like. I do believe the applicant is here, and they might actually be able to speak to that a little bit better than I could. But I don't know if I'll be able to answer that for you right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Council questions? Mr. Patner?
I'd kind of like to hear the applicant's answer to that question.
Me, too.
Does, would they have an architectural rendering of it?
I have a few sample photos on my laptop here.
That'd be great.
Is there any way to see those, Mr. Stonehill, or?
Mayor, council, possibly if you've got a, given a jump drive by chance, or I might be able to figure out a way to get you plugged in, but.
I've got one.
Or email them, or?
Yeah, I might be able to plug you in up here at the station, but I'm fortunately not familiar enough with the technology to do it right away.
If I'm the only one with the concern, that would be one thing, but it sounds like there's more.
That's definitely a valid concern.
Laptop's really not old enough for this HDMI, is it?
Type C, yeah. Well, it does have HDMI.
Looks like we have a camera set up here. We might be able to show it on the laptop screen from this camera here. I'm not sure if that's an option.
I think I may have bumped something in.
Oh, I see.
I've got a couple of unused flash drives.
Jenny's got one here, too.
Do you have a flash drive? Might be able to do it that way.
Thanks to CTN for working with us. I know it's kind of difficult to pivot like this. You do have a flash drive. Thank you so much. See if we can do that. That's an option as well.
So many different options.
So these are obviously not a rendering of the proposed building. These are pictures of different buildings that the wall manufacturer that we're working with provided me with here.
And that would be lower and a lot more windows than you would have, correct?
Correct. So this is basically what I'm trying to portray is, we're still kind of actually working a little bit through the actual design of the rake and some of these smooth panel finish. But I'm just trying to give you an example of the different textures and breakups you can get with a precast wall through. So the current design is showing a rake finish, a smooth finish with color variation to give it some, a good, a good appeal, I guess. Let me pull up a few different photos here. So that's another kind of example of, that has a block rock face pier built into it, but.
I think, I think, again, a lot more interesting than what you were showing us for Coon Rapids Boulevard.
So this picture might be a kind of a, a good idea of what it perhaps will end up looking like, besides the additional texture on that wainscote there. So I guess the idea is you're gonna have rake, a couple smooth bands to break it up, and then a couple panels that are just smooth with a color variation. I don't know if that, if I'm explaining it, giving you a good visual. Unfortunately, I don't have a good rendering of what we're proposing, but.
Your honor? Let me just ask one question. Am I misunderstanding the process? Tonight, are we not, we're not really trying to figure out what the building's gonna look like tonight? We're just trying to figure out if we can do the lot, or, Mr. Patner?
Mr. Mayor, to answer that question, so we, we actually are, we definitely can talk about what the building looks like. The design flexibility request for brick along the building is directly related to the look of the building, and so their, their request to not add any brick to the building is, is kind of similar to what we're talking about here. So it would be the purview of the council right now to request changes to the design in order to meet that 30% brick requirement at the very least.
Yeah. This is a great company. They have my full support down there. I guess, I would just like to see a better architect's rendering of the building to know what we're dropping right on Coon Rapids Boulevard there.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That second photo that you showed us, that had the minimal brick on the side, that was very attractive. The darker brown with the raking and the windows, that type thing. That right there would get my approval, at least, because I do think that that particular look would accent the Boulevard nicely. But I do agree with the mayor as well. We need to have something there on that space. And please help me orient a little bit. This building would be alongside the current building, not behind it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. We would definitely need to have something there that would accent it, rather than look like a warehouse.
Sure.
Yeah. And so, yeah, that would be my opinion, anyway.
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Patner, could you bring up just even the straight site plan so we can see in relationship to the other building? I know one of the pieces in our packet had in the site plan, I think it's page eight of nine.
I think that just led to me, yeah. So if I, yeah, I think they.
Because you can't, you can't see these.
Oh, it's, it's just too light?
It's just way too light.
I see what you're saying. Okay, let me see if I can find something that, that shows that a little bit better. I apologize about that.
And, and, you know, because, I don't know, Matt, because it's in our, if you can just get to the.
Right, if you go to the council packet.
Council packet, it's in there.
The attachment.
I see. Show it that way. See, I'm not sure if I know how to get there, just.
Mr. Mayor?
I was just gonna, while you're working on that, the, what I want to look at when we get there is the orientation of the warehouse, the new component, in conjunction to the existing building, and when you're gonna be looking at your sightlines. If you're coming, let's see, west, it looks like I'll see just that front corner, which won't be that bad. But if I'm coming east, all I'm gonna see is a mass of concrete. And, and that, to me, is the bigger concern. I was looking at page eight of the nine, and then you gotta rotate it once.
Have you done?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Yeah, well, my question is, why does the applicant find it impractical to include the brick or natural stone? So if we have a answer to why that would be impractical, I'm curious, because it does seem like having the brick is a way to break up the, the concrete in addition to the, whatever you called that, the striping.
Matthew, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Oh, sure.
Just while we're getting.
Yeah, I guess, so the architect we're working with, there's a couple different reasons. So his concept is utilizing the rake finish, the smooth finish. You're simulating a, almost a masonry facade. Now, it's not a individual modular brick or a stone, but visually, at a distance, when you're going by at 40 miles an hour, it's not a huge difference in design, right? So why are we trying to push away from padding of veneer? It's just, it's a cost factor. It really drives the cost up. So I mean, bottom line, I guess, would be cost.
How about, just a quick follow-up. How about the one where the brick, you showed us a picture, and the bricklayer was just on the bottom?
Sure.
Is that still, is that more reasonable?
It's really a toss-up, because it, that, that picture there is a form liner that's built in when they manufacture the panel, and you also see a huge cost increase. Yeah, it's, it certainly is something that, I guess, we can continue to consider on how we can make this more visually appealing, but.
So what we're looking at from Coon Rapids Boulevard is the north elevation, correct?
Exactly. Oh, so what's shown up here, Coon Rapids Boulevard is to the north of what's shown on the site plan. If you're looking at the elevation, that's all four elevations right there that you can see on that page.
Yeah, and the, and the, the elevation of the four, that's the north elevation, that's the most plain of them, is the one that faces Coon Rapids Boulevard, correct?
Correct. Oh, I see what, I see what you're asking. Sorry about that. Yes. The rendering that I showed you is from Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the elevation of the four, the third one down.
Yeah, the north.
Is the north elevation. So yes, that's, that's right.
Rotate that.
It's not working.
Yeah, I'm unable to rotate because I need a subscription to Adobe, you know, awesome system.
Yeah, and, so, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I tend to agree with you. For me, I mean, we've got, I think, two options. One, we look to say, you know, we table this and say, go back and work a little bit more with staff and bring it back to us with some good elevations, showing true color renderings, showing what we're gonna be seeing. Because I don't want to just approve it and send it to staff and say, oh, make it look pretty, I want to see what's gonna happen here, because it's a big building on Coon Rapids Boulevard. But, you know, there are, are ways, I think, that we can make this right, so I don't want to deny and have to go all the way through the entire site plan process again. You know, so my recommendation, if folks on council would be okay with it before I would start a motion, would be to kind of put this aside and have staff work with the applicant to come up with what truly are those renderings and get, this is the Coon Rapids Boulevard rendering. This is what it's gonna look like, to make sure that, from the Boulevard, which is the critical piece, that there are those design elements that meet the port standards in the district to be able to move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I agree completely with Councilmember Geisler. I think that's a great way to do it.
So I guess before we do that, my two things are, and then I'll get to you, Councilmember Grischoviac, is, is there any other information council needs, and are we messing with any timelines on this, as far as?
Where are we at with 60-day?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we would be over the 60-day timeline by the time of the next council meeting. There is the option of having the applicant waive the 60-day requirement in favor of a 120-day requirement. They're not required to do that. However, I can work with the applicant and see if we can get that to work. And I do, I think the item that is being litigated, and basically the, the point at which the council has the ability to say, this is something that we don't approve of, and, and kind of bring it back, is the design flexibility request for brick. So I think, looking at it that way, the applicant would probably have two options if the item were to be tabled, which would be, one would be to add 30% brick on the building, at which point it would meet the requirements of the zoning district. The second would be to keep the request for that design flexibility and present an updated version of that facade to council for approval, at which point council would be able to say, you know, approve of that design flexibility based on this updated version that, that's better looking, essentially.
Councilmember Grischoviac, did you still have something for us?
I don't, I didn't have anything yet.
Oh, okay. It was you?
Yep.
Oh, all right. Novak is easier to say.
It certainly is.
That's for a Novak.
I would actually be highly in favor of having the applicant come back with an updated form. Just looking at that and looking at what, at what the other options were, my primary thing there was the color. I would like to see a, some kind of color rendering that has that darker brown. It doesn't even have to be 30%. That small amount of dark brick on the sides was certainly not 30%, but it added so much to the aesthetics. So if we could come back with a, a different look for that, something that would just add a little bit to the appeal, something in color, I think that's probably what we need.
Well, that, we'll let them work that out.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
Just to add to that, I concur with the council and all the members here in what they've said. I, I think what we're also asking for is specifically that north side to be the one that has the enhancements, not necessarily all the way around.
Right.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I think to Mr. Pat Sners' question and your question about like the 60-day rule, you know, because to me, I obviously don't want to make that motion to put it on hold if the applicant isn't willing to accept an extension. I'm just thinking it's, it's our best option to be able to fine-tune this in a way that we can support and allow it to go through with all the work that's already been done. And so if our applicant thinks that, thinks that that's a fair approach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to get to yes on this.
Yeah. Yep. So, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to table Plan in Case 24-8, the site plan and dimensional design flexibility building addition on 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Second.
A motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to table. There is no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this motion is tabled. And Mr. Brody, you were probably chomping at the bit, waiting to get a date in there, weren't you?
No, that's fine. We're just gonna need something in writing from the applicant to confirm what he just said orally. So if we can get that before he leaves tonight. That he's agreeing to that 60-day extension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there, there is a second motion also that I believe might also be, the site, the site plan and the dimensional flexibility requests were written as different motions. I think both will need to be tabled.
I gotta get back to my motions.
We've tabled this action as the.
Oh, okay, that's perfect. Never mind. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's only one here. We're good.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get back to my agenda here. All right, we are looking at item seven. Planning Case 24-9, consider an introduction of an ordinance rezoning 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, this item is a request to introduce an ordinance for rezoning. So, that's the request to rezone this parcel, which is temporarily addressed, 10701 Butternut Street, from office to moderate-density residential. So, this is a community garden parcel on University and Butternut, just south of the Peace Lutheran Church. It was owned by, or it is owned by Peace Lutheran Church, and they were using it off-and-on as a community garden. And they are looking to sell the property to someone who would like to develop it. The property is currently zoned office, and the developer who's interested is September Sun Architecture, and they're, they have since submitted a proposal for a 34-unit town home development that will be on the June 20 Planning Commission agenda. And their first action was to request a rezoning from office, which is the current zoning of this property, to moderate-density residential, in order to support town homes on the parcel. So, and I just want to point out that this is labeled Peace Cemetery on here. We looked into it, and the owner looked into it, and to anyone's knowledge, this is not ever actually used as a cemetery, so that's a mistaken label, but it did come up with a planning commission meeting, and I wanted to make sure to address that. So, that is, it's zoned office right now, and it's in the commercial mixed-use, land-use designation in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So, commercial mixed-use supports both commercial and residential zoning, so moderate-density residential would be a zoning designation that's supported by the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It's a 3.8-acre site, and so, if it were to be rezoned to moderate-density residential, it would be allowed to have nine units on acre maximum, which would be 34 units, which is what the applicant is proposing. And there will be a public hearing on June 20 for the actual site plan proposal, this is just the rezoning. Right now...
Say that again, what is the public hearing?
Oh, sorry, a public hearing on the Planning Commission meeting on June 20 for the site plan itself.
Okay, thank you.
So, the current zoning of office would allow many commercial uses, not all commercial uses, generally retail, restaurants, banks, daycares, veterinary offices, dental offices, medical offices, that kind of use. And the proposed rezoning, the allowed uses would be two-family homes, townhomes, multifamily dwellings, and their accessory structures. So, commercial uses would no longer be allowed on this site if the rezoning were to pass. We did receive public comments, and there was a lengthy public hearing on, at the May Planning Commission meeting related to this. The primary comment that was brought forward was traffic, and I'll go into a little bit the constraints of the site in terms of accessing the site. It's on University and Butternut, and the only possibility, direct possibility to access the site is onto Butternut Street. So, this is the reason for a lot of concern from local residents, is that traffic will need to use Butternut Street in some cases to get in and into and out of the site. So, some of the comments were received. It was noted that kids do walk along Butternut Street to Eisenhower Elementary. There are no sidewalks currently on Butternut Street, so there, you know, kids are walking on the side of the road directly next to traffic. So, adding vehicle trips could be an issue. And then, we also got comments that there's already too much traffic on Butternut and Cottonwood Streets between Northdale and University, and that adding more traffic would not be feasible. So, at the public hearing, we had, I believe, 11 comments, and I don't want to go over every single thing, but the main gist of it was that traffic was an issue. And the reason for that being that the University Avenue is a county road, and they would not allow a new access onto the property. Even if they were to, it would be right-in, right-out only. So, currently, what's being proposed, and I kind of sketched this, so if it's difficult to read, I'll do my best to kind of be really clear about what's being shown here. The site access is on the south of this highlighted property, and in order to get onto University Avenue, cars would have to leave the site onto Butternut Street and then turn right onto University Avenue. There'd be no ability to turn left onto University Avenue. So, then they would either need to make a U-turn to the south where it's highlighted at Egrith and University, or, if, sorry, if they wanted to go northbound on University Avenue, they'd need to make a U-turn, or they would need to follow Butternut Street up to its intersection with Northdale, turn right, and then to make a left turn on University Avenue. So, it follows from that that any left turn into the site would be difficult, and there are just several maneuvers that are difficult to make in order to access the site, and that's just the nature of the site. Whether it's developed commercially or residentially, that's sort of one of the constraints that the site comes with. Butternut and 108th Avenue there is, there's no stop sign, it's an uncontrolled intersection, so I just wanted to point that out. But otherwise, the major concern was traffic between University Avenue and Northdale on Butternut, which cars already use to cut between those two roads.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Just, you know, so, for clarity, so, when you get to a site plan, you know, so at that June Planning Commission meeting, site plans will look at traffic patterns and traffic flows.
Absolutely.
They would, you know, potentially, I don't know if there would be a cross-seasment even with the church as another access, but all of that traffic gets handled, not in zoning, gets handled later in the site plan, so just want to make sure we're all straight on that one.
Thank you, Councilmember Geisler. And I do just want to zoom out a little bit, and the reason I'm bringing this up right now is that the primary concern was that adding residential units would cause problems for traffic, and the request to rezone would basically be the decision to allow residential units on the site. So, it was my opinion that the traffic was a relevant conversation to have.
Your Honor?
I agree. Councilmember Novak?
A quick question. I've been contacted by several people in the neighborhood, and their biggest concern is that high-density housing will be going in, apartment complexes. That is not the case, correct?
Correct, that is not the case.
And that would not be the case unless we rezoned it for high-density.
Exactly. If we rezone to high-density residential, then apartment complexes would be allowed to use.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Guskowjak?
If I could just comment on that comment there, no, it's not specifically high-density, but 34 units on this size acreage is pretty dense.
I just... Nine hundreds to an acre.
Mr. Mayor? So, with this being an introduction, we're not taking any vote, we're not making any decisions tonight. So, at a certain point, is it, we let this get introduced and have the conversation when we can make a decision?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to let Mr. Patzner continue, because there is a lot of contention about this, and if we can't kind of figure out a way to work the road around, I would rather leave it fallow if there's no interest in office, just leave it fallow than rezone it and then end up with all kinds of traffic problems.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Carlson, and then Councilmember Novak.
As long as we're kind of there, I wanted to just ask Mr. Patzner, so, why does the county not allow, why won't they allow access onto the university? Give a reason for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlson. That's a question for the county, unfortunately, I don't know, but they tend to be pretty particular with where they allow accesses on the county roads. I think the part of it is that they're very close to the University and Northdale intersection, and so, having those left turns onto University while people are turning right onto University from Northdale could cause increased potential for crashes. I know that, once you get close enough to major intersections like that, counties tend to disallow access, or new accesses being created, and this seems to be one of those cases, but I don't know the specific reasoning.
So, if this were, if this were to remain office, would it be treated the same, you think, by the county? I know you wouldn't know that either, probably, but...
It would. I think that there's very little chance that there's any situation that the county would allow a new access onto University or left turns from Butternut onto University. I think that that's probably a moot point. So, to answer your question, if it were to remain office and were to be developed as a commercial use, that would still be the case, and that traffic would still be routed onto Butternut Street. And I do want to say that there are potential users that would be interested in developing the site as commercial. We haven't received any applications or any direct interest for anything that would be allowed in the office district, so we did receive interest for a gas station, and I believe a car wash, that might have been a little while ago, but neither of those would be allowed in the office district. However, there are commercial uses that would be allowed in the office district, some of which could create a lot of traffic, and those would have the same issues with access onto Butternut. And so, that was just another point that was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, but thanks.
So...
I withdraw my question, actually, it just got answered.
Okay. And there's, and again, I don't want to belabor this, because again, this is kind of a site plan, but isn't this something the developer could petition the county for a right-in, right-out? Because it's not that, all that close to 109th, and just a right-in and right-out seems reasonable to get the traffic off of Butternut.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowjak?
Actually, I did talk to the county engineer on that, and at the county, Joe Pearson mentioned that they would definitely consider it, but it would be, you know, it would be right between Butternut and Northdale, and it really wouldn't impact that much, in their opinion, but that's a great point. You know, if we eat commercial or residential, we've created a spot here where we have very limited access unless we go through residential neighborhoods, and that's the conundrum that we're in. In terms of moving it from office to residential, a couple of things on that. I think that residential, one form of residential, maybe not high-density residential, would probably lessen the impact in the neighborhood, so I would maybe tend to move that direction. But my question to this is, if we changed it, if we rezoned it to the moderate-density residential, that's a density of between four and nine units per acre?
That's correct.
So, nine being the maximum. So, if we change that, and someone came up to us with a site plan that said, here's, for 34, we could say, 34 doesn't fit, but 24 does. I mean, is that something that we could consider on a site plan level, once we change the zoning?
Kind of a long question, comment.
How does that work, when the range is four to nine? Can we say, this was really better suited for only five units per acre?
Because the zoning gives the range of four to nine, if a proposal is within that range and meets all of the other requirements of the MDR district, we don't really have the ability to say, even though you meet all the requirements and you're at nine, and nine is allowed in the MDR district, we want less. Basically, what that's saying is, if you meet all these requirements and are not asking for anything else, and you're at nine, and you're able to make that work, then that's what the zoning district was built for, essentially.
Okay. Thanks, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, so...
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I do have a number of questions, but first, I want to ask, were you done presenting, or do you still have more to present? Because I know we kind of interrupted.
Thank you. Everything I was going to say has been asked as a question.
Okay.
We moved you a lot.
Then I have a few comments, just want to share. So, the, I have talked to a number of residents, some of them are here this evening. The main concerns, as you already shared, were traffic, safety for pedestrians, especially schoolchildren walking to school, and possibly additional cars parking on the street. There are also concerns currently already about people speeding on Butternut, folks cutting from Foley Boulevard through the neighborhood to get over to University Avenue. With that, though, then, the things we're looking at are, like, public health, safety, order, the general welfare, and making this decision. There are a lot of pros and cons and a lot of things to weigh. Things that I'm thinking about is, it's currently zoned for office, so we could have a restaurant, we could have retail, there would be traffic coming and going from that also. As far as parking, each unit does have a two-car garage and a driveway, so there should be plenty of parking, unless they're having a graduation party, which lots of people are having right now. And, one thing I am thinking is, because there's so much conversation going on, is it possible, just suggesting this, if we could add this to our work session as a discussion topic, to talk about what are some measures the city could take in the area to enhance public safety as this potential project moves forward? That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I think, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, yeah, so, a few points, and I think Mr. Patzner said, so, if we do, I mean, we'd have to introduce it, and in two weeks from now, we would have to approve it before any zoning would change. And at that point in time, any proposal, if it meets the letter of the law in the ordinance, it goes through, right? But as you just saw with our previous case, there's chances for flexibility, design flexibility, or, you know, dimensional flexibility, or all of these different kinds of things can come into a site plan. And anytime, you know, if a future site plan requests that kind of flexibility, that's where we have control to be able to go, eh, maybe not nine, maybe seven, oh, maybe six, right? So, that's where our staff works with the applicant to find what is the right balance. And as I mentioned earlier, when you look at a site plan, you're going to look at the traffic patterns, you're going to look at what are the things that need to happen. You know, it could be that, you know, you require them to put a sidewalk in, you know? There are a number of other things that we can do with a site plan, and making sure that as that parcel is built up, or that is planned, that it meets the needs of the entire community. I think where we're at right now, we've got an empty lot that really doesn't generate any tax revenue. The office, we're seeing that that really is maybe not the best fit from what is the right thing for the community, and it's like, well, if we have an opportunity to do something, is it moderate-density? Is it a mixed-use commercial? Is it, you know, a different type of commercial? You know, because the landowner should have the right to be able to sell and use their property as well. So, I think, you know, for us, it's looking at what is the right thing, and how can we make this work for the community? And right now, all we're doing is introducing it. There's going to be a lot of conversation that's going to have to happen in the next couple of weeks, and I think staff has heard, you know, from us enough that there's a number of things that that would be imposed on that person putting in a site plan to make sure that it got passed through the council, to be able to make things work. So, I'm willing to let this, you know, be introduced versus just shooting it totally down, so we can continue the conversation.
Yeah, and I don't think there is any, I don't think we were not, we were not going to introduce it. I just think we want to make sure that we have a conversation about it with all of our concerns, because we don't have another opportunity for a big dialogue like this.
We don't, yeah, yeah. And it just gives them a couple more weeks to think about it before we have the big dialogue in a couple of weeks.
And I guess the neighbors have a very valid point. There are, we're looking at adding as many units as there currently are on Butternut Street and Cottonwood and 108th. I mean, so we're essentially more than doubling the traffic on that street. And then, I don't want a situation of, like, when they redid University Avenue, all of a sudden, we had all the traffic on Alder and 116th and Cottonwood, trying to find an alternate route back to University again. And I, so, we need to address this before anything, before any site plan is approved, and that's going to require a lot of conversations before we get to that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yeah, just to throw my two cents in as well, I spent a, two or three, I believe it was three, different times sitting out there in that area, watching the traffic come through. But the first time I went out there, I went out and parked along the side of the road right across from the lot. I eventually pulled my truck into the parking lot, because some of the cars flying down Butternut to get to University, I was not comfortable with it. And I live off of Foley Boulevard and Northdale Boulevard there, where the county just put in all of these medians in the middle. I can see potentially running into the same issue here with the, doing the U-turns at Northdale and University and at Egrith and University, like we're seeing on Foley Boulevard right now. And we've already got cars coming in and out of there that are doing the U-turns. I potentially see this just compounding with more traffic getting out of there. If, if the county's interested in looking at that right-in, right-out, I might be a little more interested in it, but right now, from what I saw with my small window of opportunity, there's going to be a lot of traffic there.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak first?
I'm sorry to extend this even further, but yeah, that was... I'm sorry to extend this even further, but yeah, that was the first thing I saw as well, Brian. I live right at the point where Epiphany Church and the railroad tracks are right there. They put that bridge in and suddenly, all of the traffic from three neighborhoods, each about twice this size, was going through one exit. And if you wanted to go towards Coon Rapids Boulevard, you had to do a U-turn. And that's still the way it is today. Now, we do have a entrance into that neighborhood from the southbound direction. So if the county would be willing to do that, that would help a lot. But yeah, I think that this plan needs to be looked at a little bit.
Councilmember Carlson, did you have something yet?
Yeah, even though we're not making a decision tonight, I am glad that we're able to have the conversation early. So we're not dropping this on the applicant and our staff two weeks from now. So I'm glad we're able to have the conversation now. So all cards are on the table and everybody knows where everybody's at.
Okay. Is there any other questions on this or any other discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gascovia?
I do understand it's just going to, it would just be an introduction tonight to change the zoning.
It's just an introduction. We're not taking any action on it. Between now and, now and the next meeting, if you don't feel that your concerns have been voiced, make sure you reach out, spread it out, spread out the love a little bit. Reach out to some of us too. Brian's really been taking the brunt of it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So if we introduced it tonight and we have some more discussions, broader discussions with the community and with councilmembers of staff, and we come back two weeks from now, we could potentially say, we do not approve the change.
Sure.
Okay. And at that time, so the next question I have is, so we go from moderate density to high density.
No.
What's one step, no, inner zoning. What's one step lower than moderate?
One step lower than moderate density would be low-density residential two.
From one to four? To one to three?
Oh, I see. From, I think it's from one to four. It would be the bottom, it'd be, it'd be nothing to the low end of the.
The next step down is LDR two.
LDR two. Would be, I believe, one to four, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Lenzmeyer, would it make sense if they, if they want to make sure that their emails are seen, would it make sense for them to send it to the clerk's office? That way you can just send it to all the council?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Let's have them email clerk@coonrapidsmn.gov and we'll make sure that the information gets out to the council.
Okay. That way you can reach out to all the council at once. And Councilmember Armstrong doesn't have to field all these himself. So. Okay. Is there any other questions on this before we, all right.
I will just maybe make the clarification of why you said that. Our email is not working right now.
Well, actually, I wasn't even thinking of that. Actually, our email isn't working right now. They're going to have to get that fixed for us to see it anyway. But theirs is working.
Theirs is working. So if you're trying to reach us, don't email us, email the clerk. And that will ensure that it gets to us. Because if you email our city email addresses right now, it's in a little purgatory land and we won't see it for a couple of weeks and that won't be as timely.
Couple of weeks?
Or maybe a couple of days.
Come on.
We have no, we have no known end date of when we'll start to see those. So we want to make sure that you can communicate with us effectively.
Yep, absolutely. All right. So then, in planning case 24-9, we will consider the ordinance rezoning 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC, introduced. It's just been introduced.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Patzner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that you are here for this topic. The public hearing is at the, is at the planning commission. But communicate through the clerk's office and it'll get to the whole council. Okay. All right. Item eight, consider an introduction of an ordinance establishing a local housing trust fund. Mr. Brown, did you want to hit the highlights on this or?
Yes, I can touch on some of the highlights, evening everyone. So in this item, you're asked to introduce an ordinance that would create a local housing trust fund. There are a few reasons we are recommending that such a trust fund is created. First of all, I'll mention, a local housing trust fund was created, it's a tool that was created by the Minnesota Legislature about seven years ago as a way for local governments to use funds from a variety of sources to take on a really wide variety of housing projects, programs, initiatives. Of course, in Coon Rapids, we have a Housing and Redevelopment Authority. As many cities do, cities have less of an ability to do housing sorts of projects. A local housing trust fund really establishes that authority. So there are a few different reasons we're looking at creating this entity. First and foremost, we really want to just provide clear authority for the city to administer its existing housing programs. You might remember back in 2020, at the advice of our auditors, we had disbanded what was called the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation. It was a separate entity that was kind of charged with administering funds that the city had received in the form of mortgage repayments. The city had special bonding authority back in about 1980, back when interest rates were very high and as a way to stimulate housing development in the city. So those original mortgages were repaid over time. Back in the early 2000s, the city, along with the Mortgage Assistance Foundation, had looked at, or had created a variety of housing programs, kind of operating those repayment proceeds as a revolving loan fund of sorts for various types of housing programs. So we have several of those. They're administered by the Center for Energy and Environment. So we really feel that while the city does have the authority to administer those programs, it just makes things clearer from an auditing perspective if those are housed within a local housing trust fund. I'll also note that, you know, really under the current scenario or under the trust fund branding, those funds are really city funds. So the city council has the final say over how they are spent. They're really incorporated into our budget process either way. So it is kind of a housekeeping item from that standpoint. The second reason we are recommending creating the trust fund is that, as you likely know, the legislature in 2023 created a new sales tax in the metro area. Some of those funds are going to cities in the metro area. So we are slated to receive some of those funds. We don't know the exact amount yet. It kind of depends on collections, but it's estimated between $600,000 and $700,000 a year. We do feel, our recommendation for those funds, at least for 2024, and again, this is something that we can talk about with the budget process each year. Our recommendation for those funds for this year is to really plug them back into our existing programs. We have a few programs that meet the income qualifications for use of those funds. Those include the low-interest home improvement loans for households earning 80% area median income or less. Also, our down payment assistance program, which is good for first-time home buyers. It is basically operated as a deferred loan. So they're currently eligible for up to $5,000 and that amount is repaid when they go to sell the house or at a later date. So that program has a maximum income limit of 110% area median income. And based on our spending on those last year, we're pretty confident that we'll, we'll be able to use those sales tax funds for those two programs in 2024. Because that legislation refers to a local housing trust fund as a, you know, acceptable home for those funds, we feel that once again, that provides clear authority for us to administer those funds rather than just have them sit in, in a city, just another city fund. And then thirdly, we're proposing to create the trust fund because the state does intend to establish a matching grant program for cities that have trust funds. So through that program, we would potentially be eligible for up to $225,000. And while that's significantly less than what we're loaning out each year, it is certainly something we could use to supplement those programs. Once again, just plow those funds back into the programs, collect the repayments so we have, you know, a good revolving loan fund, really in perpetuity. That's, that's our intent with, with those funds. So those are the reasons for creating the funds. There are a couple other documents that were attached to the memo that I'll quickly touch on, that, one, just allocate the funds to the trust fund. That would be the resolution. We also have a budget amendment resolution. I mentioned earlier, you know, when the Mortgage Assistance Foundation existed, that group really kind of had its own process for administering the fund. Since it was disbanded, that has been incorporated into the city's budget process. Since we don't always have a good handle on, you know, how well or how well subscribed the programs will be in any given year, we've kind of played it by year and then done a budget amendment at the end of the year to just sync things up. It's really our preference or we feel like it's a best practice to establish that amount better at the beginning of the year with the budget. So we're proposing to clean that up. Starting in 2025, we would just incorporate the full amount into the budget process. And then finally, attached to the memo is a contract amendment for our contract with Center for Energy and Environment, which administers and services the loan programs. We wanted to, one, with that cleanup, again, how we allocate funds and change the language in there. In the past, the Mortgage Assistance Foundation would kind of offer up additional funds when the current pot depleted. Again, we feel that it is cleanest just to establish that in the budget each year. And then secondly, we were proposing to make a slight change to the down payment assistance program. And for first-generation home buyers, offer up to $10,000 in deferred assistance, which would, could layer with a similar state program. So some of those home buyers could take advantage of both of those programs and get some additional assistance when, when buying a house. So the current amount, again, is 5,000. So we propose to make that 10,000 for first-generation home buyers. I can certainly answer any questions.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Brown?
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak?
Just a clarification and.
I'm pretty sure I heard you properly, but the control of this fund and the spending from it would always be in the hands of the council, correct?
That's, yeah, that's, that's right. Again, the Mortgage Assistance Foundation had been a separate entity. And at our auditor's request, they really came in and said, you know, these, it's really the city's responsibility for these funds. So since that time in late 2020, we've, we've had the council make all the final decisions related to it. It's been incorporated into the budget. So it's really the city's funds. Any changes are, the council has the final say in those.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Brown, can you, can you describe how the deferred assistance program works?
Yes, and actually, I have Kristin DeGrand here as well, my colleague, who works more closely with the specifics. And perhaps she could, she'd be better equipped to describe that thing.
Sure.
Sure. For, for any of the city's programs that are deferred loan, of which we have two, deferred loan is a second mortgage against a person's house. It has no monthly payment. It's a 0% loan and it gets paid back whenever the house is sold. So it just makes for a very affordable option for whether they're buying, you know, using the deferred loan to buy the house, the down payment assistance program. Or we do have a deferred loan for rehab for people that are lower income that need to make certain repairs to their house.
We pretty much guaranteed that money back when the house is sold? Is there a time limit on that or?
There is no time limit. So this is due on sale, whether it's two years down the road or 20 years down the road or 30 years down the road. Of course, the, I mean, there is some risk, like if the person were to foreclose and the property is sold for a lesser value, you know, if, or if housing values were to take a huge hit. And we did experience a handful of foreclosures, you know, back in 2008, 2009, 2010. But I don't think we surpassed even maybe five. So even at the height of it, it's, it does happen, but it's uncommon.
What, how do you verify that someone's a first-generation home buyer? Is there something already being done by the, you mentioned the state is doing something? Is there some way of vetting that or looking into that or how do you do that?
Yeah, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has kicked off a new program just about a month ago. So it's new to them as well. What they do is they create an affidavit that the home buyer would sign claiming that they themselves or, and, or their, or, and their parents, that neither one of them, the parents or the home buyers have ever been a home buyer, or homeowner, I should say. So, you know, if they were ever to, if there ever be any information in the future that would suggest otherwise, that would then be mortgage fraud. And then would, you know, I'm not sure what the, we'd have to come up with some sort of plan as to what we would do. I'm sure it would be that they would have to repay it immediately, would be my guess. But that's how Minnesota Housing is planning on handling it. It's just that the home buyer would have to sign an affidavit.
So we're mimicking what the state is doing, but the state isn't requiring us to do that, to get that 0.25% with the money that's coming from that?
Correct. No, there's no, the funding through the housing sales tax, there is not a lot of restriction right now. I mean, they do say that they, you know, any of the funding is to be used only for homeowners that are under 115% of area median income and can be used for things like rent assistance or home improvement funding, the development of housing and other things, as long as it meets, you know, the clientele that has the income, that meets the income requirements. But beyond that, they, there is not a lot of detail of what they require of the cities.
And like the other programs we have, when the money is gone, it's gone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is just an introduction this evening. I think we've had some mission creep since we workshop this on April 9th. It just seems like it's expanded since then. I would love for us to have an opportunity to workshop it before we pass it, before we actually pass the ordinance. Maybe we'll pass it exactly the way it's written. I don't know. I would just like an opportunity to workshop it. Is there anything time-sensitive on the Housing Trust or the timing of that or anything?
There, there isn't a lot of time sensitivity. A couple of things to keep in mind, you know, we do expect to receive that first sales tax payment sometime in July. It is not the end of the world if the trust fund hasn't been created at that point. But ideally, we would, you know, create that within some reasonable timeframe of that occurring. We also do want, as part of the 2025 budget, you know, we're kind of starting up that, that work right now. So as that gets better established, I think we want to have some idea of what we're doing. Because I will mention too, that our loan programs with higher interest rates the last couple of years have been really well utilized. And I think we probably expect that to continue in the future. And we do want to make sure that, as I said before, the funds we currently have are really going to be available in perpetuity. And we don't want a scenario where we deplete those. So while there's a little bit of sensitivity, we want to get this done in the coming months. It is not so urgent, though, that we, you know, need to adopt the ordinance in June.
How much success have we had with that $5,000 deferred down payment? Is that like, is that used a lot or is it used? Because that's for, currently for a first-time home buyer buying a home in Coon Rapids, correct?
Right, Mayor. So the existing down payment assistance program that we have has been in its existing form since 2019, I believe, is when we made the change. Where it's just, you know, up to $5,000 for first-time home buyers. The home buyer has to take a HUD-approved home buyer class. And it's a deferred loan, again, 0% interest, no monthly payment. It's paid back whenever the house is sold. It has gone through a little bit of change just because, especially with the last, you know, two years or so with the interest rates being so high, there haven't, has not been as much of a use. So these past two years, I believe we've had roughly like 12 to 16 loans per year. Whereas the previous couple of years, we are closer to 20 loans that we do each year. But that kind of gives you a ballpark of the activity.
Okay. Yeah, that's actually more than I expected. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any more questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gascovia?
So the funds from the former Mortgage Assistance Foundation, those funds then would go into this new trust fund, I take it? Okay. And then, the reason I ask that is I just, would we have adequate guardrails in this trust fund to kind of? trust fund to kind of protect that, to make sure that that always stays solvent? I know that's been a big thing for our city. There was a lot of really civically engaged residents and civic leaders and staff that put that together, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the same guardrails, that same oversight and everything is there with this new trust fund.
Yes, I, we have that established currently as an activity, or its own fund in the city budget. We'd really be proposing to simply rebrand that existing fund, so it is really a standalone. It is not being commingled with the general fund, it's not being commingled with the HRA. It is still a standalone fund. And we would have the opportunity, the nice thing about that tool is that it does allow us to transfer other funding sources. So if at some point we wanted to transfer HRA funds into it, other city funds, private funds, if someone wanted to give us a grant to do more of these programs, we can accept that and put it in this fund. So it is, there are plenty of rules around how it is operated, but yes, it is, it is a standalone fund and has those guardrails in place.
All right, and with that, I kind of like the idea of maybe discussing this one more time between the introduction and then the final passage or the final vote. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, we will consider an ordinance establishing local housing trust fund introduced. Item nine is to consider a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine for the provision and maintenance of certain sanitary sewer and water main services. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Makes sense to me.
This is, this kind of started, this conversation started recently with the redevelopment of the Burger King site. There are several properties, not just within Blaine, but on all of our borders, where it's just not cost-effective for us to run utilities to it, so we take advantage of those shared services. So as we were looking at the redevelopment of that site and how that served, we talked about how we memorialize this, and we looked at all current properties between Coon Rapids and Blaine, and so we wrapped it all up into one single joint powers agreement, kind of memorializing what's been done, how our utility billing works with their utility billing, how water consumption goes into sewer consumption. So it's just a way to memorialize past agreements. They're all existing properties, they're all existing services, with the exception of one that is currently still well-inseptic, but we do not have the ability to serve that. So we wanted to also memorialize the fact that Blaine has it there, the service is there. When the time comes, they'll be ready to accept that. Really, it just boils down to existing services, how we bill, how the utilities serve those common lots, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Councilmember.
Many of us didn't know we had water mains that connected with Blaine's until their water towers went empty that Sunday morning. Oh, we have valves we can turn on? Wow.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
This is very clear, and it just makes plain sense to me, so with that, I make a motion to approve the Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA, with the city of Blaine for the provision and maintenance of certain sanitary sewer and water main services to properties located along the common city border.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion on this?
Are we voting on this, or just considering it?
No, this is a vote. Not an introduction.
Fantastic.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And item 10 is to consider Resolution 24-66, awarding the sale of $8,485,000 in general obligation bond series 2024A.
Mayor, Council, if I may introduce Mr. Nick Anhut, who's our bond advisor from Ellers Inc., who will share some good news, I think, as it relates to our bond sale that happened today.
Nick always brings good news.
Reputation precedes the allegations out of time. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Nick Anhut from Ellers &amp; Associates, financial advisors to the city, and I am here with some good news. I hope you'll feel the same. The city went out to bid on what was to be just under $8.5 million worth of general obligation bonds. These bonds are designed to fund the city's 241 street reconstruction project that is underway, as well as a variety of water fund projects that have been identified within your CIP for this year, and the Coon Creek Trail Project, which is the final project that was authorized back when a referendum was approved. All of these bonds are repaid from a combination of tax levy, as well as the water revenue paid solely from net revenues of the water fund that the city administers for that utility Where we are today, the amounts have been verified, we did solicit bids on behalf of the city. In preparation, we prepared offering documents with the help of city staff, and we had a discussion with Moody's Investors Service about the city's credit rating. Credit rating is a third-party opinion that provides an evaluation of the city's, you know, existing financial health, its local economic activity, as well as some long-range projections of future debt, capital needs, and budgetary projections. And I'm happy to say that, consistent with many of the actions they've taken over the last, you know, decade, they have affirmed the city's AA1 credit rating, which is the second-highest rating grade that they do offer, and it puts the city in a pretty high category amongst its peers across the, you know, cities and counties across the country. That rating places you somewhere in the 8th to 15th percentile amongst all the highest evaluated municipal credits in the country. That report was attached and was provided last week. Some things just to note, key strengths, again, they note that the city has a robust financial position, meaning that you're maintaining fund balances from year to year, budgeting appropriately so they don't go into deficits, and those reserve levels really do carry quite a bit of weight when they are evaluating. It does show that you've got some flexibility in the future. If things were to change, the city would be able to accommodate and wouldn't be scathed. Some of the challenges that they note is slightly elevated leverage, that just means a higher sense of liabilities in terms of debt, as well as pension obligations, that those amounts, when you compare them to higher-rated peers, so the AAA-level peers, you have a slightly elevated amount in comparison, but, you know, that's a broad brush stroke, and certainly not anything new. In fact, Minnesota cities in general, because you administer so many different types of services, generally carry an elevated leverage position relative to other states, or other cities in other states. So that's nothing to be concerned about, and Moody's is not concerned as well, they just identify it, since they had to say something, as a challenge. We did receive five bids on the bonds, so we opened these bids this morning. TD Securities was the winning bidder at 3.66%. Our projections were showing about a 3.9%. You know, those are about a month old, and they're also conservative, but we're happy with the bid. As you can see, it's, it is slightly lower than the other bids that were presented that are all in the 3.7 range, but even amongst all five, you know, it's still only .11 of a percentage point difference between all of them. So it's a fairly small amount, but it does translate to interest expense in dollars that you don't have to levy for. So we certainly do recommend moving ahead with the bid from TD Securities at the low end. This next slide just summarizes all the different components. The improvements portion for the reconstruction project is going to be repaid over 10 years with a levy, and so when you take that bid and you actually apply that interest rate, the actual interest cost for that portion of the bonds is going to be under 3.5%, and that's solely because it's being paid down faster. The water revenue portion is stretched out a little bit further for 15 years, average debt service of $418,000, 3.76%, and then the parks referendum is virtually identical to the reconstruction project portion because it is also paid over a 10-year period. The levy that we had projected for this, with the results of this sale, this is about $11,000 per year better than our projections, so a lower levy amount. So certainly, good news, as you mentioned. So with that, I certainly would stand for any questions, but there has been a resolution prepared by your bond attorneys, your special counsel at Kennedy and Graven, that resolution awards the sale of $8,230,000 of general obligation improvement utility and park bond series 2024A. Passage of that resolution would award the bonds to TD Securities based on their low bid. It would lock in the rates and the payment schedules that I just went through on the previous slide, and it would establish us ready for closing on these bonds on June 27th. That's when the funds would be wired from TD Securities into the city's accounts so that you can continue to make payments on your projects and reimburse the costs that you've already incurred. Happy to stand for any questions, but congratulations, and we certainly recommend moving forward with this resolution.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Anhut?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to accept Resolution 24-66, awarding the sale of $8,485,000.
Nope, $8,230,000. Read it off your resume there.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, $8,230,000 in general obligation bond series 2024.
Yep, sir, yep. Go ahead, just read everything off of that one, don't even go back.
Oh, my, gotcha.
Yeah. Okay, start over.
You got it. Resolution 2466, awarding the sale of $8,230,000 general obligation improvement utility and park bonds, series 2024A, fixing their form and specifications, directing the execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Do you have any of those three last bullet points as part of the motion?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Novak and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskoviac first.
Is it too late to ask some questions of Nick?
Heck, no.
Just, if you'll go back a couple of slides, you, the bonds were broken up between general obligation and the water revenue portion bonds, so that water revenue portion, I thought that would, that would come in lower than 3.76 because it's backed by the, by actual revenue. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it come in slightly lower than the others? Or why is it higher?
So there, all of these bonds are packaged together under the general obligation pledge, so that's what the bonds are being underwritten at. That is the higher form of security, because the general obligation essentially is the city council saying that you're going to use your full faith and credit, every fund available, to make these payments and make sure that they're provided for. There's not a higher level of security that you can provide. So it's not just the water revenue fund, but it's all of your funds that you're actually pledging to make those bondholders whole.
Okay.
So the reason the rate is higher just on here is solely because that is the actual true interest expense, because the water revenue portion is being carried for 15 years, whereas the other components are being paid off in a shorter timeframe in 10 years, so they don't accrue as much. So this is just a calculation of the true interest cost when you accommodate for the length of time.
Okay, I didn't accommodate for that length of time.
That's the reason there's a difference.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question.
Okay. Councilmember Rayrower?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank our finance director, Ms. Ashley Hansen, who isn't here tonight, but for doing a fabulous job continuing to make sure that we're in that top 10%. I like that. Also, the AA bond rating, all good things, all good things for our taxpayers, and so thank you.
All right, do we have further discussion on this? Currently have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you all.
It's always good to see you.
Let's keep that streak going. Kept him late tonight.
All right, well, while you're there, anything for open mic?
I hope you brought your umbrellas.
All right, well, we are up to the open mic portion of the meeting, but I'm thinking that we don't have anybody here for open mic, so, and I don't have any reports on previous open mics, so we are zipped up to other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
Since I'm back here, I can do our announcement things, and I know that our lovely Mr. Steve in our booth has all of the great little graphics for us about all of the things coming up for us, starting with, I believe, our summer concert series. So that is, our first one is the Castaways, which will be on June 6th, and here you can see the whole series of concerts that will be coming all the way through August 8th. We will remind you at every council meeting, but you can check those out on the website, and they are at the Coon Rapids Dam. Our next item is, we have our bike rodeo, so that's where your kids can learn the bike safety, and as you're going to see them zipping around with school being done this week, on Saturday at Coon Creek, or Lyons Coon Creek Park. Stop by between 10:00 and noon, and our police officers facilitate that and work on the bike rodeo. And we have Summer in the City coming back. So a week from tonight, we will be at Mercy Park, that's the new park that has the new accessibility kinds of things that we put in, in partnership with the hospital, and so that's Mercy Park, from 6:30 to 8:00. And what we do at the Summer in the City meetings, we have all of the city departments, they've got tables, and we've got representatives. So any question that you have about the city, you can ask staff, council will be there. There's fun and games, there's water, there's ice cream, all kinds of good fun things for everybody to partake in. And I think our last one is about our farmer's market, and so that's at the Ice Arena, and that's on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that, our first one will be on June 19th, so that's a couple of weeks away. Look forward to seeing everybody there.
All right, very good.
Your Honor.
Yeah, that Summer in the City meeting next Tuesday night at Mercy Park will be, it's, that'll be a great one to show up at because that's been a completely renovated park, and that was a partnership with Mercy, and it's a, it's a pretty, pretty cool park. Councilmember Novak?
Yeah, I'm going to put our chief of police on the spot here. I'm really excited to say that I've had several people contact me about doing ride-alongs with the police, and so rather than me continue to ask him several times over and over again, I'm just wondering if maybe he could give a quick summary of how a person could request to do a ride-along.
Councilmember Novak, generally speaking, the ride-alongs, we do them for a variety of reasons, but the vast majority of our riders are students, are people pursuing law enforcement careers, but we also do them for Citizens Academy and for citizens that have general interest or questions about the police department. You can reach out to the Coon Rapids Police Department through the website is the best way, you can email the patrol captain, generally speaking, Captain Madsen.
And that website address, the email address, I believe, is coonrapidspolice@coonrapids.com?
The, well, there's a variety of email addresses, but if you're going to reach out, it would be best to go through the patrol division, patrol captain, the link is right on the website under the patrol division.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
That's one of those things where, that's their office. It's like, think about, you want somebody to sit right next to you in your office all day and watch you work, so it's, it's a little, little protective, I think.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, any other business to come before council? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Armstrong to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we're adjourned.